I hereby call our meeting to audit. Let us please stand for our invitation and for our pledge of allegiance. To our gracious Creator, we thank you. We thank for this precious day. We welcome you into this meeting. We declare that everything that we do, we would do purposefully to do what is best for the citizens of Florence, Carolina, that we will be a better city and we will also be a better neighbor. We ask if anything within us or within this meeting that would interfere. We plead that you are sovereign in it and also utilize it for the uplifting of your presence. So you're welcoming to this meeting to please have your way. Amen. One more please. One more, one more please. Come on.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Council. At this time, we will have accrues of our minutes from January 9th, 2023.
Slumah.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign. At this time, we are prepared to go into our appearances before council. I would ask each participant to please note, each person will be given a notice to speak, maybe to limit to five minutes during your presentation. So at this time, we will proceed on and we'll call to our podium, Mr. Brad Hanna. Mr. Hanna will be speaking to the council on our water concern. Thank you, Mr. Hanna.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor.
Good afternoon.
Ladies and gentlemen, the council.
Governor.
I'm here today, I'm sure many of you know, I don't think all of you know, as I do know, a mass email that went out on a night to all the council members, the mayor herself, on a Miss Essie Crawswell last month. Miss Crawswell is 95 years old. Miss Crawswell was an educator in Florence School District 1 for 57 years. Miss Crawswell's water went out on before the week of Christmas, before the freeze, busted on her street there in Timminsville. She contacted the City of Florence, the Water Department, several times the week prior. No one showed, no one showed up, no one showed up. Now, I know we had a freeze on a plumbing electrical company and we were very busy, but her leak started before then. She had no water due to the bust in front of her house, so the water main had completely busted. On 12/30/22, she received a door hanger. The door hanger says that it's the leaks on the city side. Street was flooded, we kind of figured that out. I don't know what date this one was on, but it was between the 12:30 and 1:11. She had called again after the water leak was fixed and said, "I still have no water. Can someone please help me?" I'll remind you again, she's 95 years old. They come? City of Florence, I believe this says City of Florence, this is your door hanger. It says something on, okay, leaking inside left off. The city left, they said they left her meter cut off. So that was a week between 12:30 and 1:11. On 1:11, Miss Essie received another door hanger after she called again, 95 years old. The next door hanger said, "Miss Essie, your pressure's okay. The leak's on your side." And it says other, check on the bottom. Has an arrow pointed for the back. On the back, it says, "Good pressure. Customer's line is stopped up." We received a call from Miss Essie on 1:14. I sent my technicians over there the following day. They proceeded to say that there is no water, as they called me, going to the meter. I go to, I asked them to go behind the meter. We know that there's a cutoff valve behind the meter. They said they could see there was, obvious there was a recent repair. When she got the recent repair, he said, "Well, yeah, it's there and it's cut off, but there's still no water." So at that point, they continued to investigate. They dug up behind the city and sent me a picture of them holding the city's water line in their hand. Miss Essie had no water for a, for a month, solid month. That morning, we started, she and I both calling the city. I talked, spoke with a gentleman named Scott. He argued with me for, I don't know, 30 or 45 minutes stating that there was, that he sent four crews over there, that there's water, her line just stopped up. I said, "No, sir, I'm, I'm holding your line in my hand." After that happened, I put some posts on social media. We all know that it reached out to a lot of people. I think one went over to 50,000 citizens of the City of Florence and county. Several went, many more thousand to others. Out of the council, Brian Braddock reached out to me and said, "What can we do? No one else?" And I was told that there was a mass email. None of the other council reached out to myself, Miss Essie, being an educator in the City of Florence School District 1 for 57 years. Randy Osterman was tagged in the post that night. We didn't hear from him for about two days. Once we finally, he didn't contact, he contacted her, she wouldn't have a meeting with him without me there. We proceeded, I proceeded to that meeting. I couldn't stay long. I told her I had some other people that needed us, we had to get to. In the process, he took responsibility for it. I will say that, I was standing, listened to that. But then when I left, he looked at her and said, "Just for your one month without water." Here's a hundred dollar bill. He said the city offered her three months without water. Miss Essie's water bill runs $34 a month. Picture a 95-year-old person using the bathroom in a bucket for a month. I want you to picture in your mind, as your eyes are closed, toting gallons of water to be able to use them. One gallon of water weighs eight pounds. And then I want you to picture that person to be your mother or father, or your grandmother and grandfather. And I want you to think about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanna. Next we have before us is Ms. Irma Wilson. Is Ms. Wilson present?
No.
Hearing that Ms. Wilson is not here, it's time we will move forward. We have next Ms. Lynda Johnson, Executive Director and Senior Citizen Association. And she will be speaking to council regarding funds for a meal program.
Thank you, Mayor. And I know a lot of the individuals that are here, it's great to see y'all. I don't think I've had the opportunity to meet with you, Brad, but I'm Lynda Johnson. I'm a native here of Florence. This is my hometown. And I came back to Florence to give back. And I work for Senior Citizen Association in Florence County. We've been around for quite a while and we represent your grandmothers, your mothers, your fathers, your uncles and your aunts. And we need your help. We're struggling. And I really need to make that, say that again, we're struggling. Senior Citizen Association is a nonprofit organization. And we're not a federal agency, we're not a state or county agency. A lot of times, people think that we are a federal agency. Yes, we do receive federal funds and state funds and county funds, but we are still an independent agency, struggling to meet the needs of senior citizens in Florence County. Now, we're not getting enough funds to take care of the needs of seniors. Now during COVID, during the pandemic, during, and we're still getting a little bit of care money, we were able to provide service at a certain level. But since that money is no longer there, we cannot provide on that same level. Which mean, we're talking about individuals. We're not talking about just a number. We're talking about senior citizens that are unable to receive a meal, which is a homebound meal in their home. We provide one meal to go to their homes Monday through Friday. And right now, a good many of our seniors are not receiving that meal. This past October, I went to a conference in Clemson. And at that conference, there was a lot of executive directors over the state. And they were talking about their meal program. And a couple of the directors there said, "We don't have a problem. We don't have a waiting list." I said, "You don't have a waiting list?" Now, I'm not saying everybody said it, but a lot of the people in that meeting said, "We don't have a waiting list." So of course, I'm close to them. Why don't you have a waiting list? I have 130 people on a waiting list waiting for a meal, a very eight-dollar meal. And I can't get the funds that I need to be able to serve these individuals. And they said to me, because our county government, our county churches, they help us out. They may not help us out with transportation, they may not help us out with home care services, and they may not help us out with a lot of other things. But they help us out with seniors getting meals in their homes. And that's not hard to do. And I said, well, that puzzles me. And they said, "Well, you need to go to your council and let your council know what's going on, that you need their help." Now again, I want to make it really important, I have received funds from the city and the county, and I received funds for the city when we went through care. And I'm very thankful for that. But that, providing those meals at that fund level, meant that we went out and reached out to seniors to get home delivered meals. So our funds are now reduced, so we're not able to deliver on that same level. So what we do is we tell them it's 82-year-old or 85-year-old or 95-year-old, that I'm sorry, I cannot provide a meal to you. I'll have to put you on a waiting list. And you'll have to wait two years before I can give you that meal. By that time, you know what happens. They're in a nursing home, the deceased or family member comes and get that family member and move into their, move them into their home. So again, we're struggling, we need services to help our seniors in Florence County. And we're asking for an increase from the county, I mean from the city to put us in their budget. And I think I sent a request to, I don't know if y'all got that request, but I know, Madam Mayor, that I did send it to Kevin and I sent it to you as well. And I think I sent it to each one of the council members, if I'm not mistaken. Did y'all get that?
I received it.
Okay, all right. So it tells you a little bit about the amount of money I'm talking about, the number of seniors, which I'm only talking about 25 seniors. So that's only gonna, that's still gonna leave me with 99 seniors that's not getting a meal, because I'm only taking 25 off. But again, any amount will help and will help our seniors. Because when they call me and they ask for services, that's the hardest part of my job. It's to tell them that I cannot give them a meal. I could not bring anybody in their home to deliver a meal to their home and I'll have to put them on a waiting list. And that's a very difficult thing to do when someone needs a meal. So again, I'm here asking that you help us out. This has been overwhelming for me. And we ended up getting into a new project, helping seniors with their homes. And that's been outstanding, I mean unbearable. In terms of the, we had 110 seniors, we got $50,000 in United Way to help with some just small projects. And it was just, it's just never-ending. The amount of problems and living conditions that a lot of these seniors are living in. And everybody wants to stay in their home as long as possible. And this is what home delivery meals program is about, is keeping that senior in their home as long as they can. Community-based service in your home. I think I'm probably out of my time and I want to be conscious of that.
Yes. That completes your presentation.
Definitely.
All right, share with the masses.
Good afternoon. First off, as I saw you out there, I had to let you know, and for those council members and others who don't know, my mother, because you've said mothers and grandmothers, my mother was a passionate, ardent follower and attendee out at the senior center for many, many years until she passed. And of course, today is the eighth anniversary of her passing. And I couldn't see you because you've always been, you were so sweet to her and the whole staff out at the senior center was, y'all were always so good to my mama.
Thank you.
And I want to thank you for that, from the bottom of my heart personally, for all that you've done and your whole staff, just exceptional. And if anybody has not been out to the senior center, I would strongly encourage you all to go out there and see the amazing work that is being done out there at just so many levels. So.
And I appreciate what you said, because there's so many different levels that we do provide for our seniors, trying to keep them out of nursing homes.
Well, my mama was the bridge player. And so y'all, and the library attendee.
Yeah, and the storyteller.
And the storyteller. So I mean, there's so many different services that you all provide. It's really something that folks at home as well, if you're not familiar, and I'm sure you'd be welcome to give people tours if they do come. So I would encourage everybody to go out there and to see it. Because the services are exceptional.
Thank you.
They really are.
News do come out.
I have a question for you though, specifically, I know that you all serve all of Florence County, correct?
That is correct.
And so some of the people who are on this list are from the City of Florence, others may be in Florence County. Have you already made plans to go before county council as well?
I just mentioned it to Kevin a few minutes ago as well, that Rusty asked me to wait until he got on board to meet with him as well. I do get a little funds from the county and also out of respect and to acknowledge the county, they also oversee the building. So that puts more money in our pockets to be able to take care of our seniors. So we don't have to pay for the maintenance of that building.
That's something the county provides.
Rather than the senior center.
So with regard to the funding request, I think there's two different aspects of it. One, if I heard you correctly, is this like an immediate crisis thing that you're talking about, or is this, would this be more ongoing?
Ongoing.
Okay.
If you could possibly put this in the budget. So I could go back to my town parks until we got some help from the city.
Okay, so what you're seeking is not a one-time funding right now, a one-off. You're seeking to be put into the budget on an ongoing basis.
If that's possible.
Okay.
Just my interject, the email that she sent forth, which I did direct her to go ahead and contact my financial director, Mr. Yocum, so she would be placed in the process of seeking those funds. If she, I did give her the information so she's aware, but I also encouraged her to come and speak before the council.
Okay, thank you.
Not budget, you start, you like first.
So I, for, for the rest of us, because you had the conversation with the mayor for it, but for the rest of us, we just wanted to make sure that we understood what the request was for. And so if I hear you correctly, it's, because we got a budget process coming up, you would like for us to consider some ongoing funding.
That is correct.
In our budget process.
That is correct.
All right, well, thank you very much. I appreciate the clarification. Thank you.
And I also refer, she sent that email out to us and she placed to the council her request for the funds. And in that email, it includes the why and what was the changes. So if you hadn't had a chance to review that email, it's very detailed and she did a good job of outlining it. At this time, we do have two more council members who wants to speak. And I do want to acknowledge that she's referring to the Letterman Center, which is located over at the Freedom Florence campus, if you want to come out and see their center. That's where, he Letterman Center there. We have two council, and I saw by hands, by the same, I'm gonna go with council Neesmith Jakes and fallen councilwoman Neesmith Jakes, we councilwoman Barnes. And then at the councilwoman Barnes, we have councilman McCall.
I just wanted to say, good job. Y'all have been really doing a good job out there. I was a part of the spectrum, when Spectrum got the grant and for the seniors to learn computers. And that was very impressive for them to even graduate, because I know texting, computers, a lot of that can be overwhelming for our seniors. So I definitely applaud that program that y'all did. And I thank y'all for letting me be a part of it. My question is churches, have y'all, have you went to churches as well to help or?
We do a campaign with the churches. But one of the things that we're so proud of, we have about 10 churches in Florence that help us deliver meals on wheels. So that's cost-saving right there. You have, they come in a rotate, rotating schedule and they come and help us to deliver meals in the community. So we do get donations, but just the fact that they help us with these things says a lot.
Good.
They're invested in our agency.
Good. And also too, I want to, the helping seniors with their homes, I definitely want to talk to you more about that. I know we had some funds for weatherization as well that, that could possibly help. So I definitely want to get with you on that.
I'd love to talk to you about it.
Yep, thank you so much. That's all I got.
Thank you too. Thank you for coming to that Spectrum presentation. It was wonderful.
It was.
Well, I want to thank you for all, everything that everybody said, I say ditto. I just wanted to make the plea for you. Because to private people, the business sector and the private industry, because our finances are limited and even what you're asking for, you're saying is really not enough. And so I'm praying that we would have more people to come and invest in our moms, my mom, my stepdad, you know, all of us with elderly parents may frequent the facility. And it has been a benefit to, to all of them. So I would make a plea to the business people in the private industry to also help, help with this.
Thank you, councilwoman. Councilman McCall?
Yep, and again, thank you for all that you do, Ms. Johnson. I think LaShonda kind of touched on my point already, just kind of the downside of going last, but I know she mentioned churches, but I know Help in Florence for Flourish with Chris Hanley, has he, have you been in contact with?
Yes, very much so. We have a partner here. And we're actually gonna be meeting on Wednesday again. So we are doing some things together.
Okay. And the second question I have, I think George touched on it a little bit. I know you said roughly about 100-plus people, I guess it's on your list. How many of those people are actually live in the city?
I don't have that information, but I can email that back to you.
Okay.
Joyce is here. Joyce, do you know her name in the city? I can get that back to you. I'll get that to you as quick as possible.
All right, thank you.
I just want to make a distinction, the Letterman Senior Center is named, of course, after Hugh Letterman. But we are an agency, independent agency of our own. So the building is named after him, but we're still a struggling nonprofit agency. So I just really want to make that clear, because I think sometimes people see that we have his name and that we're, that he's taking care of us, people would call us and say, "Well, he's taking care of us." And all kinds of comments that we would get. And sometimes we're the VIP of the senior centers and, but we're still a little nonprofit agency, struggling inside that building, trying to meet the needs of the seniors. So I just want to make that real clear. We're happy that he's helped us to get this senior center and we honor him so much for that. But we're still here independently trying to get things done for our seniors. Thank you for your time.
Before you leave also, we do have another council member who has a question. But I do want to acknowledge that when it comes to the question about the number of citizens serving the county and the CDS, wanted some of the information that our staff, you can send it to our city manager, because those are some of the numbers they're pulling when they're looking at the budget for it.
We can get that to you, that won't be a problem.
If you get it to.
I can pull that up with her. And I apologize that I didn't.
No, no, that's fine, because with your email that was sent out, that was some of the things that they were looking at.
Okay.
So I appreciate. At this time, we recognize councilman Smith.
Ms. Johnson, how are you? First, having family members go there, and again, like everyone else, we applaud all of your efforts that you provide to our seniors. Having volunteered there as well, could you tell everyone, how many meals do you guys actually provide, maybe per day or per week?
We provide about 200 meals a day and then we have another 150 frozen meals that we send out in the community throughout Florence County.
And they're roughly about, you said about eight dollars per week?
Yeah, about eight fifty per, per meal.
And with that being said, I just want to applaud you, because those are 200 meals that some seniors may or may not ever get. So thank you for your service and thank you for being the executive director. I want to see the letter in the flourish. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, too. Thank y'all for your time.
Thank you, we appreciate all that you in the association do, because even though you just said those two, I know there's a lot of other things that y'all sponsor and events that y'all do. And I, one that you just said last year was the one for the Soterians, the one.
Yeah, that I know real well. And we have a partnership, Larry's very much for me, he's on the council, I'm on the commission. He's very much for me with our partnership.
Thank you for all that y'all do, we appreciate it. Next, we have on our agenda ordinance and positions. The first bill, number 2022-38, has been asked to be deferred by the applicant, so that is being deferred. Our next bill we have is bill number 2023-01, it's for a second reading. And it's an ordinance annexing zone NC 6.1, the parcel is located at 925 West Summerton Street, Florence County Tax Map Parcel Number 90060-07-002. Do we have a motion?
So moved, second.
All right, we have a motion, it's second, end of discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign. Let it reflect, the bill has passed. Next, we have bill number 2023-02 for a second reading. It's an ordinance to annex in zone DS, the lots at 825 South Church Street, Florence County Tax Parcel, Tax Map Parcel Number 90105-01-07. Do we have a motion?
So moved, second.
So we have a motion in the second, end of discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign. Next, we have bill number 2023-03 for a second reading. It's an ordinance to annex in zone OSR, the lots at 833 South Church Street, Florence County Tax Map Parcel Number 90105-01-08018. Do we have a motion?
So moved, second.
All right, we have a motion in the second, end of discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign. Hearing none, the bill has passed. Next, we have bill number 2023-04 for a second reading. It's an ordinance to abandon a sewer line in easement located on South Church, excuse that, South Cashware Drive, Florence County Tax Map Parcel Number 00100-01-153. Do we have a motion?
So moved, second.
We have a motion in the second, end of discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign. Let it reflect, the bill has passed. Next, we have bill number 2023-05 for a second reading. It's an ordinance to abandon the City of Florence interest in the right-of-way located on Powell Power Street on the north side of Florence County Tax Map Parcel 00147-01-072. Do we have a motion?
So moved, second.
We have a motion in second, end of discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign. Hearing none, let it reflect that the bill has passed. Next, we will proceed into introductions of ordinance. And our first bill will be bill number 2023-06 for a first reading. It is an ordinance to annex in zone NC-6.3. The parcel is located at 707 and 709 South Church Street, Florence County Tax Map Parcel Number 90104-02-015 and 90104-02-030. Do we have a motion?
So moved, second.
At this time, we are here from Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This is a request to annex and zone the lots located at 707 and 709 South Church Street to NC 6.3. Water and sewer are available to these properties. A public meeting was held on January 10th where Planning Mission unanimously voted to recommend this annexation and zoning. This concludes staff report.
Do we have any discussions or any questions for Mr. Moore? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign. Hearing none, let it reflect that the bill number 2023-06 has passed first reading. Next, we're into our introduction of resolution. And the first resolution will be discussed in executive session. It's resolution number 2023-04. It's a resolution of the city-county approving downtown redevelopment grants for a third quarter or a fiscal year of '23. So that will be discussed in executive session. Next, we have resolution number 2023-05. It's a resolution to adopt the South Carolina Municipal Association 2023 Advocacy Initiative. Do we have a motion?
So moved, second.
We have a motion in the second. Is there any discussion?
Yep.
Yes, sir. Chair recognizes councilman McCall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to kind of highlight a few of the initiatives that the municipal association is advocating in, at the State House. We had a meeting and a conference last week to talk about some of those initiatives. Some of these items are moving forward that is beneficial to the City of Florence and cities across the state, including enclave annexation, which talks about how do we better address these donut holes within the City of Florence and cities across the state. I think this, that bill is, is moving forward, which is, which is very surprising. But I think that's, you know, we have. uh, which is, which is very surprising, but, um, I think that's, you know, we have significant donut holes in the city of Florence, and with annexation laws being as tough as they, as they are, um, this legislation will be very beneficial to the city of Florence. But the main thing that I always keep hounding on, and I think, uh, everyone on council kinda knows my, uh, uh, my feelings pertaining to this legislation, uh, we don't, we don't have it filed this year, but, uh, hopefully we can get someone on board to get it filed, uh, but that's the municipal penny sales tax, um, there is the, uh, county city, uh, the county tax that passes in Florence tremendously, uh, area, and, and let me stop with the tax word, let's say municipal penny, that sounds better, right? Uh, nonetheless, um, the, the same, the municipal penny is similar to the county penny, for which each capital project that is, um, uh, presented on behalf of the city of Florence, the voters of, uh, the voters of Florence have the opportunity to, uh, make a decision on each capital project listed on the ballot, um, uh, oftentimes you hear that most of the, the, the revenue generated from the county penny is, uh, generated here in the city of Florence, but most of it is used in the county, so this allows each municipality in the state of South Carolina, uh, to put, put a referendum on the ballot for their citizens, and again, oftentimes we hear things of, 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 of capital projects that, uh, people wanna see here in the city of Florence, but I hate to be the, the bearer of bad news, it's just not the money, uh, not, not enough money there, so again, giving the people the opportunity to see the city of Florence flourish and, uh, to, uh, have them, you know, to, to vote on those particular projects, I think it's beneficial, and hopefully we can get a, uh, another sponsor for this bill, uh, to get it passed in the State House.
And that would be next year?
Uh, well, there, and, 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 sorry, my last point, I think Senator Hembry out of Ori County filed this bill a couple years ago, uh, didn't get much traction in committee, um, I think we may have someone to sponsor this bill coming up, uh, pretty soon, um, have to probably find a co-sponsor, uh, but I've just been realistic, I think with a lot of the issues that's on, uh, in the State House now, it's probably something that's probably best for next year.
Any other discussion, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Smith Jackson?
You know, I, I definitely wanna vote for the, um, twenty twenty-three advocacy initiative, one of the, uh, initiatives that stood out to me was one of the ones that said require code enforcement links to be billed and collected by cities, towns, and counties in a method similar to what is used for property taxes, so y'all know I'm all about that, so let's push forward. So I really want to say I, I am in favor of definitely adopting this advocacy, um, the meeting last week was very good, beneficial, and it was very informative, uh, to us all, and especially to first timers like me.
Any other session? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose like sign, let it reflect that resolution number twenty twenty-three dash zero five has passed at this time. Next, we have resolution number twenty twenty-three dash zero six, it's a resolution approving an investment policy for the city of Florence, do we have a motion?
Some move, second.
At this time, we are here from Mr. Yocum.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council, uh, for you this afternoon, in your agenda packet, you have, uh, a proposed investment policy, um, this is pretty much standard boilerplate language that other entities have adopted, is being seen more and more as a best practice for municipalities to adopt such policies governing the finances of the city. It also is looked very favorably upon by our bond rating agencies, one of, one of the many checkboxes we can add to our list of being very financially healthy as a city, um, just to be able to say, yes, we've adopted a formal investment policy, um, a lot of times, you know, during the year, we get questions about, you know, do you have a formal policy for this, do you have a formal policy for that, and they like seeing municipalities adopt such a policy, so, um, some of the language can be a little bit difficult to understand, but a lot of it's, a lot of boilerplate that a lot of people use, so, you know, we, as a staff, recommend that council go and adopt this policy this afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. Yocum, we have a motion in the second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose like sign, let it reflect that resolution number twenty twenty-three dash zero six has passed, and we thank both, um, Mr. Moore and, and also, Mr. Yocum for being available for any questions. At this time, we have report to the council, first, we would have appointment to boards and commission, for that, we're here from Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, we have four boards or commissions that have vacancies or expired terms, our first board is our memorial stadium, we have one vacancy that falls to Councilman McColl, we have, uh, one applicant, Robert Prigden.
Uh, uh, excuse me, I'm going to defer my, my nomination at this time.
Next, we have the Public Safety Citizens Review Board, we have one vacancy on that board, uh, that falls to Madam Mayor, we do have one applicant, David Jones.
At this time, I will proceed to appoint Mr. David Jones. Do we have, and that's my motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of Mr. Jones being appointed, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose, hearing none, Mr. Jones therefore has been appointed to the Public Safety Citizen Review Board, thank you.
Next, we have, uh, the Board of Zoning Appeals, we have one vacancy that falls to Council, Councilman Smith, uh, applicants include Mike Valerie and Charles Ippok.
Chair recognizes Councilman Smith for his nomination.
I'll nominate Michael Valerie.
Um, we have a nomination of Mr. Michael.
Second.
Valerie, and we have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of Mr. Valerie, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose like sign, hearing none, let it reflect that Mr. Valerie has been appointed to the City of Florence Board, Board of Zoning Appeals.
Next, we have our Design Review Board, uh, we have two vacancies on this board, uh, appointments called first to Councilman Braddock and then to Councilman Jabeley, we have one applicant, Mr. David Lo.
Chair recognizes Councilman Braddock.
I'd like to make a motion to accept David Lo in that, in that role.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in the second for Mr. David Lo, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose like sign, hearing none, let it reflect that Mr. Lo has been appointed.
Next, we have Councilman Jabeley, the next appointment must be a commercial general contractor, uh, Councilman, uh, we do not have any further applicants.
Well, let's see if we can get some, right Scotty?
Okay, thank you.
So at this time, that concludes, uh, our appointment to boards and commission. Next, we'll have a comprehensive financial report and audit financial statements, at this time, we would bring forth Mr. Yocum to introduce us to, uh.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council, on the dais, uh, in front of you, you have a copy of the annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended June thirty of twenty twenty, uh, the report has been audited by CPA firm, Birch Ottracil, and with us this afternoon, we have Tracy Huggins, shareholder with the firm, who's responsible for supervising the engagement, with that, I'll turn it over to him and let him review the outcome of the audit.
Thank you, Mr. Yocum.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, um, I'm glad you got a copy in front of you, um, you know, I'll just hit some highlights, um, if you flip up to page forty-five, that's your general fund, um, the budget of the general fund is thirty-six million, two sixteen, three hundred dollars, your actual revenues were forty-four million, seven fifty, nine seventy-five, a positive variance of eight million, five thirty-four, six seventy-five, the budget expenditures were forty-six million, seven oh three, forty, forty dollars, actual fifty-nine million, one ninety-nine, eight seventy-one, a negative variance, the budget of twelve million, four ninety-six, eight thirty-one, the, um, budgeted operating deficiency was ten million, four eighty-six, seven forty, whereas the actual was fourteen million, four forty-eight, eight ninety-six, leaving a negative variance of three million, nine sixty-two, one fifty-six. Forty-eight percent of the revenues in the general fund are architax credits, who are on business license, same as your franchise piece, um, and we don't have to flip, but I'll just reference page, um, seventy-four, gets a breakdown of the governmental funds, fund balance for the year, and your unassigned fund balance, as of June thirty, of twenty-two, twelve million, one forty, seven thirty-five, which is a decrease of three million, eight eighty-seven, nine sixty-nine, um, and your general fund balance decreased fifty-eight point four percent this year, but you have to look back at two thousand twenty-one, when it increased seventy-four point eight percent, and it's just spending of a bond that occurred one year versus expenditures in June thirty, two thousand twenty-two, um, so if you wanna flip over to page forty-five, it, this is to your enterprise fund, your water insurance, your stormwater utilities, um, your operating revenues, forty-three million, five thirty-one, seven hundred twelve, your operating expenses, twenty-nine million, eighteen thousand, four forty-nine, the net non-operating expenses, nine million, three forty-four, five eighty-five, the net transfers in, one million, five forty-nine, oh eighty-six, leaving a net income of six million, six seventy-three, seven sixty-four. Yeah, that's the gist of the majority of the financial portion of the audit, you know, you got in front of you, it's one hundred ninety-two pages, um, our letter is on page twenty, it has changed dramatically in the wording, but not the outcome, and it is an ununlaidified opinion, it's just the opinion has been put at the top, and a lot more detail can add to the letter, so if you get a chance, you know, feel free to look through the archer opinion, and then, you know, in the back of the book, which is interesting for lots of people, the statistical section on pages one fifty-six to one eighty-three, is always interesting to look through the statistics over, over time, the ten years of time. Any questions, council, any questions, any concerns, any questions?
Hearing none, thank you so much, and we appreciate you, and Mr. Yocum, as well as our whole financial department, who's going this first, thank you so much. At this time, we will proceed on to the next portion of our agenda, we are going to, um, go into, let me get y'all the update, our reports to council continue. And as far as Mayor's report, I do wanna thank Councilmember McColl for giving that update from the legislative base, and some of the things that we are being faced with as a state, so thank you for doing that report there, but I want to thank the council members who attended, and especially, um, first timers, our new ones who are there and they're going for their classes, so that's really shows dedication, and not only to come and serve the city, but also be willing to take that time to take those classes, so congratulations. Do we have anyone ready, I'm getting close to graduation, I know I'm new one.
If I'm gonna say, I graduated.
And look, I'm, I'm, I'ma go ahead and stop it. So I do want to note, we do have a new graduate, so, um, we want to congratulate Councilman McColl for graduating this term too, but that's.
I think it's record time to ask Casey.
Did you have to put that on record too?
Let's be clear, that was COVID.
Coming back on now, it's, you know, he loves to, he loves to make this spotlight, but yes, they did some changes because of COVID, which allowed you to be doing these things, but, um, he just, oh, thank you to the council members for that dedication going above, beyond, because there are not a lot of municipalities who have a council who, who has one hundred percent, um, participation or graduate, I think it's less than ten, I meant to take a picture of that sign, so, I'm hoping that, you know, Florence one day will be one of the cities that will have one hundred percent participation and their council who, um, graduate, um, so, but for me, that's one of the biggest updates was acknowledged that, and also I wanna thank our city management and city team for the budget workshop that it set up for us and held, um, off-site for us, that was very important, and it also gave the city, um, time with our council to come together, to actually have some further education from the Municipal Association, so I wanna assure our citizens that when we're not here, if we're doing any kind of off-site training or retreats, it's always for the uplifting and betterment of the city, so I would like to acknowledge that, and also, I'm thank our staff for being able to do that, and also leave their family members to come out to do that as well. Um, we will have some further things coming up with our Municipal Association, and I would encourage, as always, for our city citizens, please go to thecityofflorence.com so you can stay updated with the things that is occurring in our city, not just because of any crisis, but on a day-to-day basis, so you can stay informed and you can have information, ask any questions that you have as well. But as far as, um, my report today, I really just wanted to thank the, um, city council members who went and who are pursuing their new line of education, and to congratulate our new graduate, Councilmember McColl, so at this time, I'll proceed on, we can go into our committee reports, and first, we will have our report from the chair of the Business Development Committee, Chair.
Thank you, uh, the Business Development Committee met on January the nineteenth, and, uh, Councilman Braddock, as well as Councilwoman Barnes were there, along with, uh, Randy Ostrom, Clint Moore, Michael Hemingway, uh, we discussed a, uh, detailed review of the downtown loop, which I'll just show here, and this is the three different colors, uh, you've got green, blue, and red, representing a loop of a half mile, two and a quarter miles, and three and a quarter miles in downtown Florence, and this, if it's not already on the website, is it already uploaded? Not yet, uh, it will be soon, and, and so, um, for those who are working downtown, particularly, I would imagine over lunch, would like to, uh, take a break and participate, uh, that will be available soon, so our, and downtown environment will be, uh, not only business-friendly, but also healthy-friendly. We also discussed, uh, various projects that are underway, uh, with regard to the water and sewer and roads that are ongoing, and we got an update on all of that, which is a long-term continuous process. Uh, we discussed the, uh, development projects that were ongoing, Urban Square, and for those who are, are just arriving, I would encourage everybody to look across the street, demolition has been underway, uh, last week and this week now, on some of the remaining buildings, uh, to clear the way for the new construction, and, uh, Clint, do we have a timeline on when we anticipate seeing some, uh, construction actually beginning?
We are currently finalizing the contract with, uh, our parking deck general contractor, uh, and once we work through all those, uh, items, then, uh, go through bonding, insurance, everything like that, and he'll start, um, site work on, on the, the whole area, so.
But very soon?
Very soon.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Uh, so that's exciting to see that, uh, happening, um, as well as some of the other, um, projects, the Old Nofa Building on, at West Evans Street, as well as the old movie theater, um, there's a opening bid for General Contractor in February, uh, I guess this month will be, uh, taking place for the renovations of that facility. Uh, we did talk about the stormwater and, and the, um, need for water and sewer, especially with the new Invision project, uh, coming, and there was also a discussion about various other, uh, projects going on, whether it's the West Florence Industrial Park that we touched on, which is right across from Honda, uh, the old museum, which is in Timmott Park, and what's happening with that space, as well as where things are with the, uh, Old Faith Nursing Home that's gonna be relocating to a new one off of Lucas Street, and as we're looking at these corridors, uh, we're already, uh, looking at the East Palmetto Corridor Gateway, but the Lucas Street Gateway is also one that, um, our committee is looking at very closely to see what we can do, uh, to enhance those gateways, and that's another gateway that we're looking at, and I believe, if I'm not mistaken, we should have a more detailed report next month on the status of things, yes, thank you. Um, and so, that, but I would like to just have just a second, um, and we've got, I believe, uh, Mr. Yocum, this is your last official city, uh, meeting that you're gonna be attending, is that correct?
That is correct.
Well, uh, I would like, on behalf of all of us, to, uh, thank you for all of your time that you've done, and we know where you're gonna. And we know where you're going to be located over in the county. So we know how to find you, and we've got you on speed dial. So don't worry about that. But thank you for your service.
Thank you.
All right, next we have a report from the chair of our Community Development Committee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like, we met our committee members are Shekaz McCall and Lashandra Nee Smith Jackson. We met, I can't remember the date, but we met on last.
The night?
Thursday. The night, this Thursday. And we talked about, as of today, there are 30 homes listed to be demolished. Those are the voluntary demolitions. We, we understand that there is a need for those involuntary, because those are the ones that's not actually coming and filling out the application for us to demolish the homes. But I think staff is working on that as well, and we thank them for that. We also have, in the money that we voted on, the $1.2 million, we set aside $800,000 for community and the community revitalization department has a city weatherization policy. That program that's going out, and that's the City of Florence will provide grants to weatherize homes for qualifying low-income residents to provide better living conditions within the city neighborhood revitalization. The city will provide roof repair, window door replacement, vinyl siding installation, and HVAC replacement or insulation, up to $20,000 per home for qualifying low-income families living in the city, in the area, the catalytic areas. The grant will be in the form of a deferred forgivable loan tax. The city, the home must be the primary resident. We don't do rentals. Applicants must meet the HUD gross income limit for less than 80% AMI of total household income to qualify. So you can pick up your weatherization application in the Community Service Department located on the second floor of the City Center Building at 324 West Evans Street. Also, we have, we are working, hoping that we will continue this work with the community associations. And we are asking that more of the community will join the community associations, because that is the front line of us fighting this problem with violence on our street. We need the community's help. The city can't do it by themselves, the staff or the police. We need the community to partner. So please join your local neighborhood association. We are, Liberty Street is actually trying to do something with Ring, a Ring initiative, to put more surveillance on the streets. Their concern was Brunson Street. And so we, we are working, the city and staff are working with them for that initiative. I think I've said it all, committee members, if there's anything else that I need to add, I left something off?
Just reclaiming our community initiative.
The reclaiming our community initiative that, that was introduced by Councilwoman Lashandra Nee Smith, did you want to say something about that?
Yeah, just basically.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman for one-minute presentation.
Yes, reclaiming our community initiative, just a proactive, and it's a walk approach, just educating and engaging our communities on the demolition process and the weatherization process, as well as assessing our communities for revitalization. So we are excited about that. Hopefully, we can start maybe in April and just really walk our streets and assess what we need to do for without nick-hood revitalization.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
That ends my report.
Thank you, Chair. At this time, we are here from the chair from the Marketing and Public Relationship Committee.
All right, so marketing and public relations. We had an exciting, wonderful meeting with Bratton Rowley, which is the CEO of City Bot. Bratton Rowley is also the son of Governor Dick Rowley. But he gave us an extensive web-based program, which, which was awesome. It's text and web-enabled platform. And the several things I liked about it is that, first of all, it does web chats where it's just a brand extension of what we do at the city. So it piggybacks off the city's work. It does not give our staff any more work to do. There is on the back end, there's a back end process. But the most important thing I actually like is it gives instant feedback to our residents. So when the residents, you know, make a complaint or whatever, it immediately sends them a response back. And, you know, in these times, we all need that. And we are looking for an immediate response. And it's set up to serve our citizens in the best possible way and omit everyday issues. So the part I really like about it is it does the follow-up and follow-through. And y'all know I really am big on that. So follow-up and follow-through is definitely done through this City Bot. And I'm excited about moving forward on getting a texting app for our citizens.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
My report.
Thank you for that report, Councilwoman. Next, we have report from the chair from the Finance Audit and Budget Committee.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I was unable to attend that meeting due to a family emergency. So I'm gonna allow Councilman Brian Braddock to give the report.
Chair recognizes Councilman Braddock.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Mayor, we met on January 25th, myself, Councilman Smith, Kevin Yocum, and I don't know if Randy, I don't think Randy was there. Basically, Kevin Yocum reviewed the December 2022 monthly financials, had a few questions, and he answered all those, most regarding some revenue and expenditure items. Kevin also shared an update in regards to opioid recovery funds that an advisory committee had been formed by city management to include Scotty Davis, Brian Binham, and Cameron Packett, who's actually the CEO of the United Way, to review two applications. This advisory committee has recommended deferring any recommendations until some questions could be answered. So they're gonna reconvene on that. Kevin did also note the proposed investment policy, which we just approved the resolution on that as well. Lastly, we had a discussion regarding a potential to have a developers agreement to reduce water and sewer tap fees for certain developments that could not currently annex into the city, that were not contiguous to allow for some growths, growth for all these new jobs coming to the area. And we need new homes, and with the current rate of growth and the potential of land available, trying to find a way to add more opportunity there. And so we are seeking some legal and some financial feasibility advice on that. And that was it.
Thank you so much for that report, Councilman. At this time, this concludes our committee report. And we are prepared to go into our items for executive session if there were to be a motion. The executive session, if so forth, approved would be for the discussion related to a proposed economic development project.
Pleasure.
Pleasure. Pleasure, under the grounds of 30 dash 4 dash 70 A5. And B, to receive an update on a legal matter under 30 dash 4 dash 70 A2. And C, for personnel matter, 30 dash 4 dash 70 A1. Then D, for the discussion of a legal matter under 30 dash 4 dash 70 A2. Do we have a motion?
No.
Do we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor to go into executive session, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're going to executive session, and we'll take a five-minute break for those who need to. We are returning from executive session. And so do we have a motion that we return from executive session?
Motion.
And second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign. Let it reflect that we have now exited executive session, at which time no action and no votes were taken. So our items now, which were addressed in executive session, was an item to discuss a matter related to economic development. And that item was listed on our agenda as resolution number 2023 dash 04, a resolution of city council approving a downtown redevelopment grant for a third quarter for the fiscal year of 23. And before I entertain any motion on that, I'm gonna recuse myself, because one of the individuals who was presented in the project, I've realized we're related. So I'd rather recuse myself from that, because of the relative. And that would be the one with the sign language, I'm related to her. So I'm gonna recuse.
Motion, ma'am?
Second.
Okay. And all those in favor, say with aye.
Aye.
So let it reflect that resolution number 2023 dash 04 has passed. Next, we also received an update on a legal matter based on 30 dash 4 dash 70 A2.
Madam Mayor, I would like to instruct the city staff and city attorney to have further communication with the commissioners or representatives and advise council on the communication and to expand the evaluation to the entire Housing Authority Board.
And that is your motion, Councilwoman?
That's, that's my motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Let it reflect that that motion has passed. And the other items were a legal matter, which is we received information from. And we also had a personnel matter that we received information and no action or vote were taken. At this time, this concludes the fiscal portion of our agenda. But I do want to acknowledge, as noted earlier, Mr. Kevin Yocum is preparing to move to a new position. I would like to congratulate him. He will be going to the county. And I would like to say, we did receive Mr. Yocum from the county several years back. And so he's simply going back home. But I would also like to thank you, Kevin, for all that you've done while you were here at the city and with you becoming a member of the county again. I also would like to think that we're also sure that the relationship between the city and the county is working together well. And we're looking forward to having you there. We now just have another extension from our public service here. So once again, thank you. And I would like to congratulate you on achieving the position that you were seeking. Thank you again, and congratulations. If there's all, if all is clear, I entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second.
We have.
I was just gonna say, this week is what?
Before you do that, let me say, at this time, we have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Discussion.
All right.
So I just want to acknowledge that this National Random Acts of Kindness.
Random.
Random acts of kindness. That part. So that is this week. So just encourage everybody to do a random act of kindness when it comes to in the office, at school. Be nice, smile, do something for somebody out there, okay?
And thank you, because one of the acts is let us be adjourned. All those, all those in favor, say with a aye.